Hi, good evening and welcome to Conversations with the Candidates on Houston Media Source TV. I'm Gene Prost with the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. Tonight, we have candidates for District J of Houston City Council. And we want to thank you all for appearing so we can learn a little bit more about you, your positions on the issues, so that we can be better informed voters. So we're going to start right off over here with Nelvin Adriatico.
Yes, sir.
And what I'd like to ask you, and then I'll ask everybody else the same question. Tell us about yourself and why you're running for District J.
Well, again, my name is Nelvin Adriatico and I'm running for District J for City Council. You know, I was raised by a single mom. She was a teacher. And the first thing that she really taught me was, growing up, was that if you want to make change for everything and for whatever you do, you've got to be part of that change. And I've seen it, and that's why I'm actively running for City Council, because I want to be part of the change that needs to be done for our district. I am an immigrant. I came into this country with $20. And now I'm a business owner and a community advocate. I have done so much for our community, which is represented by almost 80% immigrants and refugees. I am an immigrant myself, so this run is too personal for me. I want to represent our community. I want to represent everybody who doesn't have the voice, because that's what we do. We need to stand up for what is right and what we think is right, so we can fight for it. And we've seen that, that what's been happening, especially in this government, in this current political climate. Since when an immigrant like myself is a bad thing for this country? Since when the refugee seeking to have a good life in this country has became an enemy in this country? So it's time to rise up, it's time to fight back. And that's why I'm running, because I want to represent the community, the District J, which is known as the Ellis Island of Houston. So I'm running, and hopefully I'll get your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Freddie Cuellar.
Okay, sir. The reason I'm running, because I'm not a politician, I'm someone who decided to run for office, I always tell people that. I was born to two parents who did not have high school educations. My mom and dad, they believed they got to ninth grade because they had to go out and work on their own. And I was brought on, I was born to also immigrant grandmother. And like most inner-city kids, I was born in the inner-city, my parents were always working. I started getting into trouble until one day my father put me out. I always tell the story, like, there's nothing more gangster than paying bills when you were not ready, and I wasn't ready to pay bills at that time. And I was out with my friends for a while in the streets, until one day I decided to call my father and I said, "I need to come home." So I came home and we had a serious conversation, and he said, "You have 30 days to get your life together." And those 30 days, I decided to join the United States Navy. And I always said the Navy saved my life, because when I came out the military, one of my friends had been murdered and multiple others were incarcerated. So after coming on from the military, I got involved in labor unions, because I wanted to serve people just like I served in the military. And in my late twenties, I actually became one of the youngest labor union presidents in the country. So after doing that and fighting for people my whole life, you know, this is the why. Why are you running? I'm running because for so long I've seen politicians pretend to care about working people, pretend to care about people who live paycheck to paycheck, pretend to care about immigrants, just for votes. So after watching politicians come in our halls for many years, take our money, take our endorsements, take our boots on the ground, they turn their backs on us later, I decided it was time to run. As representing federal workers in the longest government shutdown in history, and watching people I love, people I cared about, beg for money, beg for papers, beg for food, it was my time to run, because this election is not about me, it's about we. And together, we will change this city. My name is Freddie Cuellar, and I'm running for City Council, District J.
Thank you very much. Rafael Galván.
Hi there, thank you for having me. And thank you to the Houston area League of Women Voters for hosting this event. As Gene said, my name is Rafael Galván. I am 29 years old. I have lived my whole life here in District J. The biggest reason that I'm running is because I don't like where our city is headed. Having resided in the Sharpstown area my whole life, I truly know what it means to live in a culturally diverse community. And now seeing everything that's going on with the city, the fighting, the bickering, I want to bring what my community has taught me to the rest of the city. I come from humble roots. My parents immigrated here to the city of Houston from Mexico in the mid-eighties through their hard work, perseverance, and through certain progressive immigration reform during those presidencies, they were able to obtain citizenship. In getting that, they were able to give my sister and myself things that they could only have dreamed of. They gave us both educations, they gave us the moral backgrounds that we needed to become successful. Now with my sister having gone to Soul Ross, myself to Houston Baptist University, her working for Harris County, and now myself being a small business owner, I want to bring that same opportunity to everybody else in the district, and that's why I am running. And I see a lot of the candidates who give big speeches, have a lot of general statements, and it's something that I couldn't agree with more, but it's not the way to run for this office. And I hope that with my ideas and my specifics, specific plans, that you will vote for me on November 5th.
Thank you very much. Drew Patterson.
Thank you, sir. I grew up in southwest Houston for about, I didn't grow up there, but we'll live there in the last 30 years. I grew up in Laredo. The education that I had, putting myself to school and working in the insurance industry, helping people that are hurt continuously, and developing analytical skills allowed me to view a lot of situations that occur here within the city government. I've spoken before to Commissioners Court, the city of Houston, and HISD on issues affecting a variety of different things. Bringing to their attention some of the problems that I saw, and hopefully they made some corrections and took my advice as to what needed to be done. I investigated on the ship channel, the terminal that was there, that was put there for supposedly travelers, and actually it was developed there for cargo. It's been vacant, $1 million a year at the cost of citizens here. Brought that to the attention of the City Council, Commissioners Court, and allowed them to address the issue, because I certainly could not as a citizen, but I did bring it to their attention. I spoke up about the marijuana law and about how our system was really damaging people here by stigmatizing them with jail time and having a prison record as such for marijuana. And I suggested, because we're having problems not having proper investigation with the police or really hitting the hard things that needed to be done, that we somehow or another, and Kim Ogg took that issue and made it part of our campaign. So this is what we currently have. But the whole idea about it was to get more police involved in crime and let them address issues that are more high-valued than just marijuana. Plus, our jail system here is overloaded anyway. We have a mental health problem here, where our system, our jail, Harris County Jail is more of a hospital for mentally ill people. People forget that there was mental hospitals back in the eighties that decided to, instead of people would be inside the hospitals, state-run, the state decided, if these people weren't harmful, here's $10, Greyhound bus station, and thus people ended up for a long time over at the bus station to be mentally ill people, and it was a problem. The state did not take the responsibility, they laid it back on us, and we in turn had used the jail, Harris County Jail, Sheriff's Jail, as a mental hospital, which is very questionable. I brought issues up affecting us, and what made me want to run as a, sorry, I'll make, I'll stop right there.
Okay, all right. We'll come back and we'll get more information from you here in just a second. Edward Pollard.
Good evening and thank you for having me. My name is Edward Pollard and I am running for Houston City Council, District J. District J represents Gulfton, Sharpstown, Westwood, Brayburn, and Aleve. I'm a proud product of southwest Houston. I attended all HISD schools, then I went off to Morehouse College where I received my degree in political science. I then came back to Houston where I returned and went to Thurgood Marshall School of Law. I received my law degree with a concentration in government and policy. I recently obtained my certificate in negotiation bachelory from Harvard Business School. By day, I'm an attorney, and I have my own law firm right in District J. I'm also the founder of Suits for Success, a nonprofit program that mentors teen boys on life skills at District J schools. At the completion of each semester, each student receives a free suit, shirt, and tie for high school graduation and life beyond. I've been the vice president of the Gulfton Super Neighbors Council, also a member of the Mayor's Complete Communities Initiative. I've been working in this community for years, and now I'm asking voters in District J to hire me to work for you at City Hall. I look forward to earning your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandra Rodriguez.
Hi, thank you and good evening. Thank you, Gene, first of all, and the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. And thank you to the listeners and watchers tonight for tuning in and listening to our platform and getting to know us a little bit better. I'm a lifelong resident of southwest Houston. I have lived in the district for 34 years, having grown up in the Gulfton neighborhood, which is the most diverse census neighborhood in the city of Houston, the state, and the country. And I am first-generation Houstonian. I have been in public service for the last 20 years, focusing my work in the district in southwest Houston. I serve as the president for the Gulfton Super Neighborhood Council, serve on the Mayor's Bike Advisory Committee, the Mayor's Complete Communities Advisory Committee, and different organizations and committees. And I grew up in southwest Houston and Gulfton, and some of the challenges that our communities are facing today, I faced them myself. My parents have a third-grade education. We were surrounded with dealing with different domestic abuse, alcoholism, and just had so many barriers and challenges to make sure that we lived a healthy and prosperous life. And so, as a freshman in high school, I was introduced to the social service world, to nonprofits, to public service, and it is then where my life and the path changed. And I was introduced to that world. And from then on, I joined the Mayor's Anti-Gang Office to address some of the public safety issues that I was confronted with daily, having lived in the area. And today I serve, I work for the City Health Department. I was overseeing the Southwest and Harm Clark Multi-Service Center. And so my role there was to assess the needs of the surrounding neighborhoods, building partnerships with city entities, city departments, nonprofits, businesses, and different agencies to make sure that we address the needs for those specific communities. I've been doing the work for the last 20 years. I am the most experienced candidate, the person who has lived in the district the longest, and feel that I can serve this role at City Hall. Sandra Rodriguez for City Council, District J.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. So I'm going to ask you a couple of questions about some issues, and we're only going to have about two minutes, so let's just focus on one of those right now. It's raining outside. Houston has a big issue with flooding. So how does flooding affect District J? And if elected, what are you on City Council going to do to address the issue of flooding?
So flooding is, so flooding is one of the number-one issues for the entire city of Houston, along with traffic. So one of the things that we need to look at, and City Council and as a candidate, look at the structural and nonstructural measures to address and to prepare for and to mitigate flooding. Some of those things are development, looking at the city ordinances or the development regulations and figuring out the best options that we need to make sure that we build. As we build, making sure that we build forward and that we take flooding into consideration. Looking at providing green space, you know, so for in District J, we have the roofing and landfill in that area. A lot of the residents have been advocating for many years and would like to create a detention basin, so that not just a detention basin, but also a multi-use space, a green space, so where families can go out and bike trails and walking trails. Other things that we can look at, making sure that the inlets and the streets are clear of debris, cleaning up. So for instance, as we're mowing our yard, cleaning our yards, making sure that we don't blow the grass, debris, the trees, the branches out into the street, because it'll clog them. And so making sure that, those are smaller initiatives and projects that we can work on to make sure that the water flows, because the streets, the streets were built to detain water, and you know, we need to make sure that they're clear of debris.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Pollard, what can we do about flooding in District J? What would you do on City Council?
Well, the first thing I would do is look at the books to see where are our dollars going. Residents and voters are spending money every single month on their drainage fee. In 2011, I believe, voters passed to pay a drainage fee for drainage. But our city is not draining. And we just came out of a tropical storm just a few days ago, where just after three hours, our city was underwater. So we need to ask ourselves, where are the drainage fee dollars going? That's the first thing I would do. We need to be much more transparent with the public on where those dollars are going, what projects they're being used for, how long is it going to take, and how much does it cost? So drainage is very important. We also need to be working closely with the Harris County Flood Control District. Just recently in last November's election, I believe, voters passed a bomb project for billions of dollars in projects for flood mitigation. We need to make sure that those projects are up and running, and the city is working directly with the county to make that happen. When it comes to development, we need to make sure that, especially in a densely populated area such as District J, that when development and developers come into our area, there's also space for detention. And we need to be smart about detention. We don't have a lot of green space in District J, so the parks that we have, we need to have them be multipurpose. And so they are sometimes designed to be lower as a bowl, so they could serve as green space for playgrounds and recreation, but also for detention. We need to be smart about this. This is one of our most prioritized issues, and when I get to City Hall, I'll make sure that it's a prioritized issue with our office.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Patterson, I'm going to ask you the same question about flooding.
Yes. Actually, I address the issue about flooding and about corporations and businesses taking responsibility for building concrete parks or concrete buildings and driveways, whatever they do, so that the water runs off and the residents then get flooded. So it was my suggestion at the time that the people pay a portion or a higher rate for the responsibility for taking that problem of the flooding. And I understand that that's the reason why we had this passed here. The problem we do have with District J is that, mostly of Houston, is that we're actually built on swampland. So it's very humid here. The water saturates the ground, it has nowhere else to go, and then it continues to rain and the flood raises. I lived on Fondren, and before in the past, I literally had my SUV float on Fondren down the road, which is a very scary building. Bell Reef, right now, has, you can go out there when it rains, and it actually just floods, it's lake out there. They're trying to put in larger pipes to drain it. Myself, what I would address here is, we have curbs that are broken. The city's not going to repair them, because the owner is actually responsible for them. That curb, we get soot, dust, whatever else rolls down the road into the drains. We have drains that are damaged because our trucks or semis back into it, and they collapse, and the city's not taking the repair for them. We have to bring it to their attention, they don't want to take care of it otherwise. We need to do, actually, look at shrubbery as well as far as retention goes. As far as what we have here, what plants can actually hold more water, so we don't have to worry about the flooding aspect as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Galván.
Yes, it's such an important topic nowadays, right? Especially after this tropical storm we've just had again in Harvey in the past years. Unfortunately, as a councilman, there's so much, there's only so much we could do if you really know what the position does, but the biggest part is advocacy. Talking to the other counties, talking to the state, and even coming to the federal level, to make sure that we're all working together to find the proper solutions, being, as my other fellow candidates have mentioned, the green space, the detention centers, the retention ponds, also holding developers accountable for where they build and making sure that not an excess of runoff is occurring. Also, a big thing is, one of the biggest points in my campaign is accountability. As Mr. Pollard mentioned, we have had a drainage fee since 2011, and close to $1 billion of that drainage fee has gone to pay for other debts the city has had. And as your city councilman, and also with an ordinance that had passed last year, I will make sure that this drainage fee is put to good use and what it's meant for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cuellar, what about flooding in District J?
The first thing I would fix, honestly, is that we have to come to the understanding that climate change is real. Climate change is real, and we have drainage and flood issues all over District J. And one thing that I've talked to a lot of residents about, blockwalking the neighborhoods, is a lot of them are simple problems that can be fixed by the city, such as sewage drainage issues. Like, there's one gentleman I spoke to during a blockwalk, where he said that his street gets flooded every time, because the city for six months has not come out and fixed a sewage drainage pipe on his street. He said his cars get flooded, it's been two times it's happened already. And on my end, based on my understanding of everything, talking to the residents, we have to hold ourselves more accountable as elected officials too. And that's one thing about me, is that I was brought up, if I give some of my word, that is my bond. So the residents of District J, they will know this once they elect me to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Freddie actually just stole my thunder, because really is, and I agree with him, climate change is freaking real, and we have to acknowledge that. If we don't acknowledge that, it's kind of like chicken and egg all the time, right? I mean, we all know that we have to have better roads, better reservoir, clean up the ditches, clean up all the drainage that we have to do. That's all infrastructure, and we've got to do what we have to do. I mean, I just saw a picture after Imelda, the before and after compared to Harvey and Imelda, nothing has changed. For the freaking past two years that we have planned what happened to Harvey, it's the same thing, it actually got worse. In Beach Nut, where my office is, I have so many cars in front of my parking lot, because people cannot pass through, past Beach Nut where the hospital is, right? So yes, we have to do something about this. And I think as a City Council for this, for District J, all the funds that we have to do to make sure that our infrastructure is changed, we got to do it. But we also have to do something about the climate change, where we can educate everybody, that we have to have green living. It's very important for us, because if we don't do something about it, we're going to continue, the entire Houston is going to be flooded with water.
Mr. Adriatico, thank you very much. I'm going to start with another issue question about Houston and District J for you. In about two minutes, it's, you know, there's a lot of issues affecting our city and affecting the district, but what do you think, other than flooding, is the most important issue for District J, and how would you address it in City Hall?
I've always just believed that this election...
Houston City Hall, Magic Street.
We're already here, right? Yeah, I've always just believed that actually this election really is about economics and about inclusivity. And I think that's so crucial and it's so important in the district. Being known as the Ellis Island of Houston, we as a community have lived in this district with 68% Hispanic, 13% Asian-American. So we have to make sure that we are on that as a community, be inclusive and be accepting of one another, right? Because of what the political climate right now, we've been fighting, fighting, and fighting about the immigrants and the way how immigrants are being treated in our community. In this community, in District J, especially District J, 68 languages. This is very international, and that's what I keep saying. If you need to have a representation, we need to make sure that all of us in the community itself is accepted. Second, the economic aspect of it. District J is the most, I can, I probably can say, low-income is there because of the density. So many apartment complexes, blue collar. That's why I think me and Freddie here actually really are fighting for something because of the economic aspect of the community itself. I'm a businessman, I create jobs. So the biggest thing for me is to make sure that I can help our community to have good livable wages, not minimum wages, so they can actually live the way they need to live. So they're not going to be always under and get pushed over by so many other communities, because we're always the last thing. If there's any improvement, our community is always the last to be improved, and I will fight for that.
Thank you very much. I want to apologize to everybody, my iPad thought it was running for City Council, and it wanted to answer a question, but it didn't pay a filing fee, so, and didn't get signatures. So, Mr. Cuellar, the same question for you. What do you think is the most important issue, other than flooding, and how would you address it?
I think there's two big issues in District J. I've always felt like that. Just walking around the district, if you're, if you're progressive and you're walking around the district, you talk to everybody. The first big issue in that district is, our district is 80% renters, okay? There's apartment complexes everywhere. And I think tenant rights is a big issue in that district, because so many people, and this is going to piggyback to my second issue, is that a lot of people who rent apartments in District J, they are actually undocumented citizens. And they're exploited because of that by landlords. And I see it every day, and I think about it, my own situation, when I had black mold in my apartment. And they looked at my name, and my government name is Federico Cuellar, my English name is Freddie. So they looked at my government name, and they didn't help me, they didn't move me out of my apartment. Until I went into the office, I was like, "My name is Freddie Cuellar, I need to get this moved, I need to get this fixed." And when they figured out, when I say, their tone changed and everything, and they helped me move them to another apartment, because they figured out I was an American citizen. But it shouldn't have to come to that. And that brings me to my second issue, which is undocumented citizens in that community who are exploited every day. And I always think back on that little boy who I ran into when I was canvassing one time, and both his parents had been deported. And when I looked for his caretaker, it was a woman who had actually took over him, because both his parents had been deported. And once I'm elected to City Council, one of the first things I'm going to do is create an Immigration Defense Fund out of my service fund, because I think whether undocumented or documented, you should have a voice in the community. And those are the two biggest issues for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Galván.
Yes, some of the biggest things, I guess, in our community, just like the rest of Houston, are the basic necessities, such as trash, roads, public services. But Freddie makes a very great point with the tenants' rights. I have family members who live in apartments and complain about the same thing, that these landlords don't want to help them. And they can't say anything, because they're afraid. They're afraid that they'll get thrown out, they're afraid that they might threaten them to call ICE or Immigration to come and say, "Hey, these people are here and they don't have documents." So I've actually, I've already canvassed a couple apartments, and once I'm elected, I am going to send our code enforcing departments to these places to hold these people accountable, because at the end of the day, anybody who's working hard and spending their hard-earned money to pay their rent to have a roof over their head must at least have the basic necessities to live well. This is Houston, the fourth-largest city in the country, and this should not be an issue. I am passionate and will work hard for everybody. It doesn't matter where you come from, what you look like, I am here for every single constituent of District J. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patterson.
The issue, other than the flooding aspect, would be city services for the district. It encompasses many things. It encompasses the Police Department, the Fire Department, Health Department, with regards to dealing with a lot of people who are Latinos or illegals, what they call them. And they don't want to speak up, because sometimes it's a cultural thing. You have the boss up there, and you don't bother the boss. And they have to learn as an American, or as somebody here in this country, you do have rights, and you can speak up. And you need to get that out there to them, and not to be afraid. So we need to, because they pay taxes. I mean, they're paying taxes for when they buy food, gas, whatever it is, there's no representation. What is it? No taxation without representation? So even though they may not be Americans, they are paying into the system, and they deserve to get the services. Nobody's ever addressed that. We have illegals who work very hard. At the end of the day, the guy will drop them off, say, "See ya." Mexican consulate, they have problems out there all the time, and people go to them and say, "What can you do for us?" And the Mexican consulate can't do much. And I've been to those meetings. And I think that the police need to hold these people accountable, that if you're going to just take somebody's hard-earned labor and not pay them, take care of them, then you should be, you know, punished criminally, in my opinion. That's theft, theft of services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pollard, what do you think, other than flooding, is a big issue that you want to address in City Council?
The number-one issue for me is going to be public safety. People need to feel safe and secure around their home, when they go to the park, when they go to their grocery store, around their community. People must feel safe. In District J, we're home of the highest homicide zip code in the entire city of Houston, which is 77036. The Bissonet Corridor is filled with prostitution, human and sex trafficking. We have an increasing panhandling problem off the 59 corridor. We have some problems and some ills that we need to curb. And it's going to be a real public safety issue, and public safety will... And it's gonna be a real public safety issue and public safety will always be number one for me. On my website, you will find the Pollard Plan. We talk more about how we will get into resolving these issues. The number one thing I would do is I would hire a District J dedicated patrol to go around and curb some of the issues that HPD has just spread too thin to do. Neighborhood violations, panhandling, clean up the homelessness. And I'll use the dollars from my District J Service Fund. Those are discretionary dollars that the city of Houston gives each District Council member. At the moment, it's 750,000. Under Denise Parker's administration, it was a million dollars. And there are proposals of it going up to 1.5 million in the future. But I'll use those discretionary dollars to get a dedicated District J Patrol. And I'll also use those dollars to get to my second point, which is holding the apartment owners accountable. Making sure that their properties are up to code, absent of blight. Making sure that there's no trash, the landscaping is looking nice and aesthetically pleasing. Because the apartments are drivers and the people who live there deserve to get more than what they're paying for. And the apartments are drivers in public safety, beautification, when it comes to homeowner property values in the area and economic development, driving business to our areas. We need to make sure that we hold those property owners accountable so that their properties look nice. And so what we'll do is we'll use the, also use the money from the District J Service Fund to go to hire dedicated code enforcement officers to go out to those properties and hold those property owners accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you. So number one is public safety. So under the umbrella of public safety would be the safe at home, safe out in the community, making sure they have a livable place to be in. And like everyone has talked about and mentioned, our district is an immigrant community, a home for newcomers. So this is their home. This is the first place that they stop. We talked about the Ellis Island. This is where everybody starts. And so some of our families do not feel safe and they have mistrust in the government. And so first is building that relationship with the government. So as an elected official, as the councilwoman for this district, my first job would be to build that relationship and trust in the community by being in the community. To empower them and encourage them to report the housing conditions that they're living in. First, we need to support them so they can speak up, right? And then next, building that relationship with law enforcement. They're afraid of police because they're afraid they're gonna get deported. And then work on being their own advocates. Second, it would be transportation. Our district has the highest transit ridership in the city of Houston. We have a lot of families who depend on the metro system, who depend, who walk everywhere to access services. Everyone has talked about densely populated. Things are in close proximity. So we need to build walkable communities. And so speaking to residents and having lived there, we walk down the street. But some of these streets are very dangerous. Eight lanes and cars driving at 50 miles per hour. Our district has four of the most dangerous intersections, meaning that there have been fatalities, that people have died at these intersections. And so we need to do something about it. So because we are a pedestrian community, I wanna build a more walkable, safe community. And coming from a social service background, I wanna make sure that we address issues at the core of the issue, at the root, which I look at the social determinants of health. And safety is one that impacts everything else, employment and just improving the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for answering that question and even my iPad as well. I wanna start with a, change gears a little bit here. And Ms. Rodriguez, we'll start back with you again. Well, you know, you've all talked about the need for economic development and safety and, you know, runoff when businesses come in. So, but we want economic development. We want jobs in Houston. So how can we have economic development and maintain a high quality of life? Because we want that as well. And some of you have touched on these issues. So how would you put this together? How do we have better economic growth, continued economic growth and a better quality of life at the same time? Ms. Rodriguez?
Sure. So as we plan and build communities in our district, we have one neighborhood that is an opportunity zone, which provides tax incentives to businesses coming into our district for a certain amount of years. And so making sure that we hold these business owners as they come in accountable in investing in our district. As we build up transportation and we improve our multimodal transportation system, making sure that we look at the overall picture. So if we bring something into our communities and we don't wanna push our residents out, we wanna build it up. So we wanna make sure that if we bring a BRT system, the Bus Rapid Transit, or a rail, or improved system, that we look at housing options. Because as we build up communities through business, we wanna make sure that we also attach quality, affordable housing. Because property values will rise and we need, we need to make sure that we keep that in mind. So as City Council members, making sure that we hold these business owners accountable.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pollard?
So the great thing about District J is our location. District J, if you're on 59, is everything between Chimney Rock and the Bellway on both sides. That's prime location. That's prime location for businesses and families to wanna live here. Especially when traffic is one of our biggest issues. You wanna be somewhere that's centrally located. And so you have to be able to attract businesses and to attract families. And so that's gonna come down to public safety. That's gonna come down to, you know, making sure that we have nice parks, making sure that we have nice schools, the amenities that a lot of other areas have. We're the fourth largest city in the entire country. And so we have a competitive market when it comes to where do families wanna go? Where do businesses wanna be? How are we gonna thrive? And so if you come to District J, what you'll also notice outside of this, a lot of apartments, is we have a lot of commercial there as well. We've had a lot of businesses that have been in our community for years but have left and gone to Meyerland, gone to Sugar Land, gone to Missouri City. We haven't been able to keep them. And so we have to find ways to make our district more attractive. And that's gonna come down to a lot of things I spoke about before. Making sure we clean up the panhandling and the homelessness. Make sure that we look at the prostitution. Make sure that we reach out to the business owners and see what we can do from a city's perspective to help their businesses thrive. Make sure the parks look nice. Make sure the parks are free from drugs and gangs so that families wanna move into our area. When families move into the area, businesses move into the area. When businesses move into the area, the area thrives.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patterson? How would you address the issues of economic development and quality of life?
Well, they go hand in hand. Both business, hiring people that are qualified, higher income, they have a better life. You have to look at the census right now. It's coming up. And that's gonna give businesses a lot of ideas, what's there and what they wanna place there as an manufacturing, or is it gonna be a warehouse, or is it gonna be service oriented? Whatever it is, it is up to us to make sure that the district is ready for it. What do we need to do is have to look out there and say, what is gonna be the type of business we wanna attract? Can we get these people here, get them in education, work, whatever needs to be done so they can fill those needs that the employers have? We have people who work in District J, who work in Pasadena at the oil field, at the petroleum plants. That's because the jobs are there and they live in District J. We have to talk to our schools, make sure that they're teaching the students the proper technique or whatever needs to be done educationally. So when they leave, employers look, hey, we got somebody here who's able to do the job, let them do it. USA and San Antonio chose to move to San Antonio there because of the workforce. And the city had to upgrade their workforce educationally because USA was complaining initially that the people weren't qualified. But now they are and they're happy. So the same thing any district's gonna have is they're gonna have to get the people there, brought up to whatever services are needed by employers so they can do the job, get paid well and live well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Galván?
Yes, so as a small business owner, whenever you're looking to put a business into place, one of the biggest things is location, 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 as Mr. Pollard mentioned. And he's completely correct. I mean, right off of 59, in District J, you're close to everything. You're in the middle of Sugar Land, you got Meyerland on one area, you got the Galleria on the other. So people will pass through there no matter what. I think we have to work with developers very closely. We have to work with Tourism Management District when we are putting new locations into place, that we're looking at new materials such as like permeable concrete, that we're looking at new ways of how we build structures where, hey, can we mix it up with commercial and residential in the same buildings and finding better ways to do business. It's a very heavily dense area, but I feel in our district, even though everybody says it's a low income, I mean, the money is there. A lot of businesses have built themselves up for, for many, many years. And a bigger example is just how Sharp Town Mall, or what's now known as Plaza America, has survived so many years. And so we just need to work a little closer. And I will be a huge advocate to make sure that we all come to the table and figure out the right solution so that, one, we can grow economically, but two, also make sure it's for overall the best solution for our community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cuellar? Economic development and quality of life. Can we have both?
I believe we can. I believe that, what people haven't talked about, about our community is 50% of our community lives at the poverty level. They don't make over $25,000 a year. So I'm a labor guy. I'm a labor unions candidate in this race. I've always been that. And one thing, one thing I'm gonna really push for once elected is to fight for 15, to give everybody a working livable wage in the city. That's big for me, especially with so many lower income workers in our district. I believe that if you invest in them, they will reinvest back into the community with those dollars. And that's just what I feel. And speaking of kids at some of these high schools in the district, what I've realized is a lot of them think that college is their only route to success. And a lot of kids who leave the district do not come back because of that. So what I'm saying is, is that me coming from labor, you can be an apprentice, an 18-year-old apprentice, and come out of high school in an apprentice labor program, making almost $20 an hour. And a lot of these kids do not know they have these opportunities. Another thing for them, I too, I said, told them too, like, I come from where you come from. I've been where you've been. So there's other routes in life you can go rather than back to the community. And like when I say that, I mean like breaking generational curses that they might have in their families. And that's one thing that I'm gonna push for, especially when Metro Next is gonna pass. I'm gonna, I'll put it on record right now. Metro Next is gonna pass. And with Metro Next is passed, Metro Next will provide at least 250 more union jobs in this city to provide to kids coming out of high school to work for Metro. So with that being said, that is the way we would do that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Adriatico?
Yes, I've always believed that community grows when people thrive. So when you say people thrive, that means, as what Freddie said, we have to make sure that we advocate livable wages and not just the minimum wages. I'm a businessman. I have owned business for the past 11 years. I've been a banker for the past 15 years. I have helped create jobs for people and also create businesses. So it's so important for us to integrate the two. That's why in my RISE platform for our, for our campaign, R-I-S-E, Revitalization, Integration, Safety and Security and Education. I for integration. It's the public and the private sector working hand in hand to make sure that they can work together. One thing that I would love to advocate is especially for our high school students. Not everyone is cut out for college. So I would love to make sure, and I've been talking to a lot of business people, to strengthen the partnership between the school and businesses in the community itself to make sure that training is available, that internship is available for some of these high school students for vocational courses, technical courses. Because that will actually prepare them for what's ahead in the future. So we need to start while they're still young to have this advocacy of financial literacy is one of them. The biggest thing that we have to do. Because if they don't understand financial literacy, it's gonna be difficult, no matter how much money they make. If they don't know how to budget and balance things, we're gonna be, we're gonna break it. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be where we need to be, right? So really, it's so important for all of us to understand that creating economic growth is so crucial for our district and it can be both good life and economic growth in business. We just need to make sure that both community and the, and the private sector works hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're, got time for one more question. And I'm gonna ask you all to tell me, because you've all answered the questions, you've all, are all informed on the issues. Why are you the best candidate for District J? And if people wanna know more about your campaign, where do they need to go to find out more about your campaign and more about you? Mr. Adriatico, we'll start with you again.
Well, you've heard everyone, all of us, talked about our promises. We've talked about our differences and what we have to do to really win your vote and win your campaign. But the end of the day, I always just say to people and to everyone that I've talked to, this election is about economics and inclusiveness. This is all about us. Because it's so important for us to make sure that we as a candidate can know the difference and what we can do to take this district in a different level. I am the only candidate that has done so many for the past 15 years, community service in this, in this community. I am the only candidate that has created jobs in this community because I'm a business owner. And I am also the candidate that has fought being a gay man, a family man, a father, that has rights for the GLBQ community. So I know how the struggle being an immigrant myself came here with nothing. But I fought, I fought and struggled and now I'm a business owner. And everyone, everyone can realize the American dream because I am a living proof of that. Thank you.
So where can they find out more about your campaign?
Please go and visit our www at adriatico, number four, j dot com for our platform. It's what we call the A Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cuellar? Why should people vote for you?
People should vote for me because it's about time we elect real people to a real office. Those are just the facts. You know, we've seen all kinds of politicians come into office, sell us lies, tell us everything. And the fact of the matter remains, my dad, my dad used to have an old saying, he used to tell me, he said, "Son, a paralymp could tell you anything." And that's true. For so long, we've allowed politicians to tell us anything when they get elected and they have not been held accountable. I'm for the people, man. Like I've said it when I first gave my, I talked about my campaign earlier. This election is not about me, it's about we. And we will change this. And people need to understand that District J was created for a Latino. It was created for a Latino candidate to win because currently in the city of Houston, we're underrepresented. And that is the reason why I'm the better candidate, plus the facts I've stated throughout this forum. Because like I've stated before, this election is not about me. It's about we. And we will change this city together. So elect Freddie Cuellar for City Council, District J. And you could find me at cuellarfordistrictj.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Galván?
Yes, I think I'm better suited just because I'm, I'm your average guy and I've lived in District J for 29 years. And I am more than thankful to this community because this is where I've been able to thrive. This is where I've been able to be successful because of everybody and everything around me. I want to continue that for everybody. My campaign is running on four basic points. Fiscal responsibility, accountability, community and economic development, and inclusivity. This district really shows what the city of Houston should be like and we need to bring that to the spotlight. Please, if you have any questions or concerns, call me, text me. My personal cell phone number is 713-380-0260. Or you can go on my website and find more specific plans that I wanna put in place at rafaelgalvan.com, R-A-F-A-E-L-G-A-L-V-A-N dot com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, my background as, as far as my previous, I'm retired now. But what I did do for a living, every day I helped people. That was my approach. What can I do to help them? What's the problem? Whether it's a governmental issue or a issue with regards to policy, whatever that may be, what could I do to help them? I mean, I would simply go to bat for them. I don't care if they were the president of the company or the janitor. If I could help, I would. And my approach here has been the same thing. So I approached City Council, I don't care if you're a Democrat or Republican, whatever it may be, if the issue is there and you present the issue properly to show, here's the issue, here's what we need to do, here's something we can service the, the citizens without having an increase in, in cost or anything like that, having a taxes increase or whatever it may be, let's do it. Problems in District J are not isolated, but we have here, other districts do. You need to work with the other councilmen. You have to work with the city of Houston and the citizens there and the people in the bureaucracy, as it may be, to get things done. Thank you. Oh, my phone number is 832-276-1712. Please call me on any issue or questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pollard?
Well, I wanna thank the legal women voting for, legal women voters for having me today and allowing me to share my vision for the city of Houston. This message is directly for the voters of District J. This message is directly for the voters of District J. Just like you, I want my family to reside in an area that is safe and thriving. To accomplish this, I've come up with the Pollard Plan. The Pollard Plan will address building successful neighborhoods, being fiscally responsible with your tax dollars, and promoting our district to attract businesses and economic growth while highlighting the diversity which truly makes our community unique like no other. District J has so much potential. We're in an ideal location with great people and strong families. I'm committed to leading and representing a community you will be proud to call home. To learn more about the Pollard Plan, please visit pollardforhouston.com. And I ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandra Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you again for this opportunity. I am the only candidate that has been confronted with a lot of the issues that we've talked about tonight in regards to our living, living conditions at the apartment complex, the crime, safety issues that we are faced with, with the transportation issues that we are addressing. And so all of the issues that I'm running are, are issues that I've been working on for the past few years, and it's something that I'm very passionate about. Not only am I running for my family and my community, but to improve the quality of life for everyone there in southwest Houston, to make sure that we move our communities forward. So as an individual who has been confronted with these issues, who has done the work for the last 20 years, I am fitted for this role to serve as the next city councilwoman for District J. To find more information, you can visit me at rodriguezforhouston.com, or you can call me on my cell phone, ask me any questions about my platform and where I stand on any issues at 832-559-2572. And I'm asking for your vote, and hopefully we've, I've earned your vote for this November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so Sandra Rodriguez, Edward Pollard, Drew Patterson, Rafael Galván, Freddie Cuellar, and Nelvin Adriatico, I want to thank you very much for coming out tonight, for braving the rain, and for appearing on Conversations with the Candidates on Houston Media Source TV for the Legal Women Voters of the Greater Houston Area. Every year, the Legal Women Voters of the Houston Area publishes its Voters Guide. It's a guide where we ask questions, much like we did tonight to the various candidates. And this is for HISD, for HCC Board of Trustees, and for all of the Houston City Council candidates, as well as mayor and comptroller for the city. We ask them questions, we publish the guide. It's available in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese. It'll be in print, it'll be coming out in about three weeks, about the middle of October. And it'll also, it's also available on the Legal Women Voters 411 webpage and Legal Women Voters Houston Areas webpage, L W V Houston dot O R G. You can find out more information there. You can also find our handy dandy Voters Guide. You know, we changed the way people vote and where people can vote at in Harris County this year. And if you, and there's always questions that people have about the voting process. Go there on the Handy Dandy Voters Guide, and you can find out more information about it. It's up, L W V Houston dot O R G. I mentioned last time we were on that our Rising Stars Leadership Program is accepting applications. We've extended the application deadline, it's now until the 30th of this month. That's just a few days away, but go ahead and log on and apply. You can find information on our Facebook page and our website. So in a few days, this will be posted on Houston Media Source TV's YouTube page, and it'll also be on the Legal Women Voters, this program that you just saw with the candidates. If you missed any part of it, you can tune in there, and we'll be posting it very soon. For the Legal Women Voters of the Houston Area, I'm Gene Price. Thank you again for watching, and tune in again for one more edition tonight of Conversations with the Candidates on Houston Media Source TV.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1453.78]